We call up Dune City after 17:00, we order at 6:00 PM. Peter Wolf call?
Mayor Meyer.
President?
Council President Susan Snow here. Councillor Mallon.
Here.
Councillor Wells.
Here.
Councillor Hammond.
Here.
And I have not heard from either Councillor Stinson or Councillor Orr. Perhaps they will. Sometimes Melissa can't get off on time.
Well, you've got four of them, so we're okay. She's a nurse, isn't she?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I'm glad that you're listening to this in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the agenda. So.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Alright. Any opposed? Ask the new members. With those two mumbles.
They're looking for something. I don't know. They have a puzzle book on their face.
They're looking for the consent agenda.
Charter announced that it will launch, it will to launch, yeah. Charter announced that it will launch pay-per-view to HD on channel 2102 on our channel lineup. Dune City is still seeking to fill two job openings at City Hall, one for permit technician and one an administrative assistant job. Descriptions are available on Dune City website. Resumes can be submitted to the City Hall by hand, mail, or email to recorder@dounacityor.com. And the deadline to have your fish screens installed and meters replaced is approaching quickly. If you have not made arrangements to have a fish screen installed and a meter replaced, please contact City Hall immediately.
Any citizen input on items?
There is none.
Okay. Presentations. Volunteer of the year presentation to Bonnie Allen.
I neglected to contact Bonnie and ask her to be here, so I will put this off for a future meeting.
Okay. Full business. Need to schedule a work session regarding limiting short-term rentals in Dune City limits.
Or, a discussion at this meeting or any other meeting is fine. I just have had conversations with individual councillors and I think all of you need to be together to have this conversation. If there's going to be one. For your information, there are known to us, and there should be information in your packet about it. We are aware of 39, is that correct?
No, 34.
Thirty-four, what we're aware of, and how many have we issued permits for?
Twenty-four, two were denied, so that would be 26, and the rest have not turned in yet.
Did we have a cutoff date?
Yeah, if they were existing, it was July 1st.
And we're still bringing them in, no?
Well, we've got some that we didn't know of, that have turned them in. But of the ones that we knew, there are, I think it's 12 that have it.
Okay. One of the first things that I see in here in this information we got, I'm talking about this right here. I remember when this, when we were talking about this months back and we were talking about Darlings over there and being an Airbnb, and I said it then. I don't consider Darlings and what they're doing over there Airbnb. I mean, they're, they're, they have a business, they run a store, a bar, fishing, you know, rentals. And they have, I think of that more like renting out a room for the night than a motel or something like that, more than a Airbnb. But that's just my opinion on that. I've seen that here the very first one.
There's actually three in there.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know, but I don't, I don't think they are an Airbnb, to me.
Airbnb is just, if they're short-term rental, Airbnb is just a way to get a rental person in, so that's how they're advertising. Yeah, as an advertising company, they do, Darlings does have two, I believe, buildings that they rent out. So I wasn't sure, and I know initially we discussed about not including any already existing commercial operations. But then we ran into a problem with coming up with a definition for short-term rental. So, and that's the difficulty, I don't know what, how you want to, that's why we went back to everybody.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we're discussing, I think we're brand-new at it, we're, you know, that's just my opinion.
They have all those trailer spaces that people come and go, and so they have a building there. I don't know about all the other truck trailer spaces and some of the other places up there, but they're already paying their, their hotel more tax, so.
The Jeopardy thing, it seems like.
Yeah, that's, I agree.
Well, so the people who go through Airbnb or Verbo pay the motel taxes and are paid anyway.
So it was my, I'm sorry.
So, saying that one pays and one doesn't, that doesn't make sense because both are paying their taxes. So, it's, you guys just want to know, I felt that we just wanted to know mainly for, in case there were issues like the other rental that had problems. I thought it was due to problems, because if you're going through Verbo or Airbnb, you are paying your taxes. There might be some that are doing it through just word of mouth, they aren't paying their taxes.
That is another part of why I don't think that Darlings falls under this, and that's just because of their history, what they've done, how they run their business over there. They live there, their whole family lives there. We don't get those complaints because they run such a tight ship over there. I don't see any possibility of ever being a complaint from Darling over there on that property.
So, this is a bigger issue than mine. The first thing is that the idea of the licensing so we could track permits to make sure that we are getting the money paid to us because some of it was going forward, something's that way, is a way to track these things. The other issue is that, so they have it, they have an RV park that comes and goes, and I understand the definition of a building. I know those buildings, I don't think they necessarily, they have that apartment above, but I don't know if some of those are going.
That's wrong.
But, but the idea, I lost my train of thought, but... The other problem is, in my, in my elevator speech, there's like 840 households and 600, 600, there's 840 buildings in Dune City and 640 are households that are occupied, meaning the rest aren't occupied. And that 240 are the difference between occupied and not occupied are potential Airbnbs. And so, that, that's one of the things, we were talking about limits and things, that's one of the things I think we ought to think about. Because there's, that's a possibility of 200 or possible, and I think it requires a discussion or work session.
I'll throw out a number real quick. I don't think we should have, to maintain the character, the livability of Dune City, I don't think we should have over 50 Airbnbs in Dune City. And that's kind of why, to give room for a few more of these, because I see 34 and 24, and that's already over 50. But we can limit that back down to 50 as they change, they're not transferable, and as they go away, to keep it limited at 50. But also, and by taking Darlings off of the rolls of an Airbnb that'd open up three more positions for somebody else. I really believe, already in my neighborhood, I'm seeing a difference. In my, in my neighborhood, the big difference is four-wheelers, ATBs, whatever they call them, children around. And quads, quads, yeah, yeah. Evidently, there's a trail up into the woods from where Airbnb is around my place and they go by, you know, that's just my story on that. But I think, my, my opinion is 50 is a place to start anyway.
I have mixed feelings about this, because if the 200 and some unoccupied buildings or other, if they were occupied full-time, I guarantee you would have similar problems. And so, we're going to get people, and I had a family buy a place across my house in another place, and the kids were running their four-wheelers up and down, things like that. The more likely that they're occupied, the more likely we're going to have problems with speed and things. I don't know if it's necessarily an Airbnb problem, it might be an occupancy problem.
It can be, but the thing, the whole idea of this was to give us some tools through permitting so that we can revoke things. So we can write her on this like what happened down Cloud Nine, now that got out of control. We have to have some tools. And the other thing is why I'm picking 50, why I said 50 as a starting point anyway, is our ability here with our staff to monitor this and to take care of it. You know, so. Yeah, but you know, we can't have 200 out there, we'd never be able to take care of it, just from what I've seen so far.
Well, I'm not going for 200, but I don't think we should limit entrepreneurship, and that's part of what this is. And I think 50 is too low, so I think it should be something higher than 50, I'm not going for 200 though. First of all, there's only about 760 to 70 residences in the city. But what I wanted to let you know is I got the usual franchise fees from the electric company today, and it's about $2,000 less than I expected. And so I called to find out why it was so low, did something change, did they regroup? And no, they pointed out that it was the same as always, but in the process, got into a conversation with them, and the fact of the matter is, if the B and B, if the short-term rentals stay empty during the wintertime, our income's going to go down. Because we won't have the franchise fees coming in.
And if, if we do have hotel motel taxes, the more people are paying in, the more income we'll have to pay for some of these services, so.
I understand that, but just, I guess my first introduction to Airbnbs in Dune City was so negative. And the things I went out and talked to neighbors that I thought were so bad, and hurt the neighborhood, upset folks so bad, that's, so I'm coming from there.
No, I agree.
And that was a short-term rental, that was not an Airbnb. They went through another property company that was not Airbnb, so let's, the real term is that they're short-term rentals and they go through a variety of property companies.
And there were problems, I didn't have anybody to tell accountable, whereas a homeowner, you do have accountability. I have an Airbnb, well, I'm next to Darlings, close to it, but I also have something down the other way. And it can be a little noisier and a little more busier than some of the neighborhoods would be, and that, that kind of doesn't matter.
As a sidebar, I don't see any way, though, that we can regulate occupancy. I don't know about occupancy, but we can regulate permit, though.
They sign a permit, yeah. And we've already discovered that, yeah, the permit says one thing. Because our fees are higher for, I mean, we have higher, more strict requirements. If it's higher than a certain amount of people and bedrooms and people staying there. And what we've found is, what they say on their permit is contrary to how they're being advertised. And so, we have a problem there that has to be addressed, and I'm not sure exactly how to do it. Just to let you know, though, the two that were denied, one was denied because the entire structure was built without permits and was closed without permits. So we don't know if that building's safe or not. We have no clue. And the other one is because it was, it's not even built on a piece of ground, it's built on the lake. And nobody has any idea.
That one actually went through.
Oh, did it go through?
The other one is the water rite.
Oh, yeah, they don't have a water rite, and there you go.
Yeah, what I was coming from is not that, the number of bodies in the house, where I'm coming from is, if a homeowner decides to go to Arizona for three months, it's unoccupied, they come back, they have no intention of ever running it. I just want to make sure that we don't propose some rule that says, well, they cannot be unoccupied.
No, that one, that one isn't, but there was some back and forth on whether the existing motels, I mean, the motels are already paying, they're already, they have oversight from the Department of Health, and Darlings, because it's a business. The resorts here, they're all businesses, they have separate requirements. And do we want to have them go through our process as well when they are to do it? I mean, they do it through the, through the state and through the county.
Yeah, it's like the structure is already there to regulate those legitimate businesses, and this is a whole new.
Right, and Darlings does have two. They have two short cabins that they have, that they use as short-term rentals.
And hostels, too.
I think the other thing.
There's just a little place to quiet, for vipers to stay in as they try to move through. They're cute little things. I don't know what you'd call that.
The other point was, we weren't sure that City was really getting enough money to process this and to do the follow-up, I don't want to call it investigation, but.
It does take a great deal of time.
Well, we charge a hundred bucks.
For two years.
For two years? A hundred bucks for two years. And you and your staff, is that covering the cost of that?
I'm going to have Lonnie answer that, because Lonnie does most of that here.
When, when the permit tech was here, we were working on things together. It has taken me most of this week to just update the information and process for permits.
Well, on that same line, do you have a number in your head? Do you think it would take, just to give us some information to at least break even?
I really don't, because theoretically, when the permit tech is here, they will be doing, you know, will be collaborating. But I know that when we looked at other small coastal communities, most of them are between 300 and 400 a year.
Oh, we're not even close. We're not even close. That didn't sound like enough money. And we certainly aren't, I don't want us to run, we can't afford to run in red, knowing this. So I think, I think, to me, before we go on to how many, we got to make sure we're getting enough income, the proper amounts that we can do with this and not cost us money. To me, that's the very first thing we need to do, is adjust that hundred dollar, because we can't lose money.
We do get revenues from, from people paying, from hotel motel tax, that should probably cover part of that.
That's, I think that's a different portion of it. I'm talking about the setup of doing the permit.
And we, of course, required a setup, we just, you know, we did make the, we did make the orders.
Yeah, well, yeah, we did. Now we're living with it a bit, and it's, and it's obviously not working.
So do you think that after the permit is done on renewals, it'll be harder to do, or will it be quicker? We have, we have a learning curve.
It will be quicker, but we'll still have to look at the property file, look in Arlid, look at permits, see if, you know, what has happened with that property. Because that, that's why the permit technician and myself work on it together, because I can't see in Arlid if Dune City permits were issued for things. So we need to do that, and then also we have to check the septic and make sure that it's still okay, so. It'll be quicker, but you still have to go through and check property files, septic records, rain carriage records.
All I'm going to propose, we establish a special session, because I'd like to have all of the council involved.
Yeah, I'm just making the same.
Our decision-making, and we've also indicated, when we first adopted this policy, that it was going to probably change. You know, as we learn more about it, the fees might increase or change, and on and on, so.
I'd like to do it with both councils as well.
Session, so.
Move the table, teacher. I'll table that.
Are we going to address the number in the special session also?
I would think that that would be a part of the conversation.
Yeah, I agree.
And when would you like to hold it, which is?
Well, I'd like to have you here.
But I'll be here on the, by the, before the end of this month, so I'll be back. But, so it's up to you guys. You should have a calendar in your back, and if I did it right, you have a calendar in your back.
Well, I think the calendar doesn't have September. Mine shows July and August.
What? Mine has September.
My back just has July and August.
Mine has September.
Not mine?
Yeah, you left, I left, I haven't heard, I was left out.
Does anybody else have September?
I have. I have August and September.
You're too special, Roy.
I, I guess I am.
I'm good any day, any day, not a day. Tuesdays are bad for me.
Well, the thing is that we're going to be setting a date without the other people, right? We can, I think we could sometimes set it, which is bad. Am I right, do you?
It's not critical, yeah.
I think, yeah. Because we're just shooting in the dark.
Yeah.
So when you get back, we'll shoot together.
Okay.
Alright, so leaving right along. The next one is the drone issue.
And I just took the information in your packet, the bottom line is, all jurisdiction is reserved in the Aviation Administration. They were unaware of us actually having airports that, with restricted airspace. They're going to check and let me know, I haven't heard from anybody, so.
Who is that, Jamie, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the.
The FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration.
You talked to them?
Yes, I talked to them.
Sure, they're saying that the lake isn't a good visiting place.
Well, it, it, they didn't say that, they said it very well could be. It's just it wasn't on their list of, neither lake is on their list of restricted airspace. So, and you know, it's funny, you guys talk about it, the next day they had one come to my back window, my back porch, Rob and I both jumped up and ran out there and just saw it shoot away, you know. So it's not like you're going to get much of a chance.
A drone or a sea plane?
Drone.
A drone, yeah.
You don't want a sea plane in your back window.
Well, I did. I haven't now.
I see it go by. Is FAA going to be bringing a new drone if you are?
They will respond to complaints, and that's why what's in your packet is what it takes to file a complaint. That's the information they need. And if you don't have that information, they said, don't bother.
Oh, pretty black and orange. Well, I think we need to have something to protect citizens from intrusive drone flying up their, up a property. We don't have that. You know, there's a lot of real estate agencies, drones, particularly nowadays, to list properties and to whatever, control the neighborhood, et cetera. It would be hard to, you know, restrict things like that. Again, it's like I brought it before, you know, a homeowner does not own airspace, or if he does, how far up does his homeownership extend to? And obviously, flying and looking in somebody's window, that's, that's not right, and that's illegal, I don't think.
Well, my gut feeling is that I think we ought to indicate that until FAA indicates that it's all right to have drones flying around our air, we ought to ban it. We don't need to have, you know, we don't have a radio tower for somebody to say, I'm coming in, and if they hit a drone, they're not going to make it.
Did ask him how we get included in the airspace, and he said to contact our legislature.
It's a new, indeed, it's a new problem, so I think if we can do that when we get back, I mean, twice a time, we're busy scheduled to throw that on their plate and see what they do worse.
That'll do good, I think.
I did find out they are limiting it restricted to 400 feet above ground. Anything under 400 feet is legal, but that's disregarding airports and things like that. That's just in general, that is the FAA. What happened to me and the ones I've heard are not 400 feet, they're right, they're right in your backyard. We can't be having that.
You know, I don't like to have that threat out there that they might be able to invade all of our spaces, but, I mean, to me, the major concern is, is air traffic control. How long's the air crash? So if you could put that on your list when you get home, get back, that'd be great. Next item is follow-up report on employment contract for any new employees hired by the city.
I don't yet have the report from our attorney. So I don't really have, I hope that I would have it by now. Of course, I'd also hope that I would have advocates by now, so, you know, there you go.
Has it changed the language, or why do we just now need one, since we have? I think we had one before, an employment contract?
This was at the last meeting, we had a discussion in terms of how quickly we turn over sometimes. Staff, when we get them trained, and they need, but should there be a restriction on how long they should stay? We can't, we can't keep prisoners.
Right, gotcha, so that'd be a new change. Which makes sense.
And no, we do, to answer your question, no, we do not have contracts for employees.
So we need, yes, we need some feedback from our attorney and some.
Alright, because he said he had never heard about, which I find surprising, because that's the only time I ever heard of it was in an attorney's contract, so.
And the government has contracts with their employees all the time.
Yeah. Alright, follow-up discussion on forming a volunteer police force.
In your packets is a letter from our insurance company. By the way, I do have more information on drones if anybody wants it. Did I not get it in there? I was looking for it, my packet's probably still.
It says, Jamie knows it.
Well, according to this letter, it doesn't sound like there's a possibility to have.
No. It didn't read like.
No.
Who's John? Says John contacted me.
John is our insurance agent. And he referred the matter upstairs at CIS.
Let me just interject, I haven't read this, I don't even have a packet here on the order list.
It's probably still on the back table. Yeah, it's probably still on the back table.
Okay. I did talk to the chief of police at Florence PD about us and what we wanna do. And I essentially just explained to him that we would want to dispatch through Florence. They are a nine-one-one center, the dispatch for county, city, state police, tribe, medical, all kinds of stuff. And it wouldn't take much to tag on, it's not, I don't think it's an IGA, bottom line is the way the chief taught it. I haven't had another conversation with him, but it sounds like it would be as easy as, they would, they would come up, Florence would come up with some sort of a very minimal dollar amount that Dune City would pay to Florence for the use of their dispatchers. We, obviously, the county is our backup here, Land County. And all we would be is eyes and ears, and that's it, that's all a volunteer does. It's, it is a presence, a visual presence. And I do not anticipate it being ever at night, this going to be day. So we could simply dispatch through Florence, pay a nominal fee per month, and the responsible person that Jamie mentioned earlier, again, I haven't read this letter. I understand where they would want somebody with a sworn person, sworn officer, to be handling that. That would be somebody from the county. And that would be, sounds like very doable from what the chief told me. But I haven't, I haven't gotten any final determinations at all. He's been very busy with the recent death of Chief Carter, et cetera.
So, I hope that you read the letter and then come back and talk.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I haven't read the letter, because I don't have a packet. I read the letter, and what I'm thinking is instead of calling it a police force, do what, call it a neighborhood watch, you know.
A little more organized.
Some of the words reserved there, and that, to be a reserve officer, you gotta be a sworn one.
Right.
And I'm not too sure that John, again, I haven't read the letter, I'm not sure that John understands that, and that we're not talking about that level of police, you know, background. Simply people would want, like Dick says, maybe, a watch. But I think it's important that we would be able to dispatch through Florence for two reasons. Number one, safety of the volunteer. Number two, just to get it on record. You know, if we trip across a bad guy out here and we see something going down, we want a record of that being dispatched at, you know, eleven thirty-two to Florence Dispatch about blah, blah, blah. Then it's on record, and then that goes, that has to go to court. We're not the one that's going to be necessarily going to go into court, but we would then be backed up by Land County, state police backs up out here, tribe backs up out here. But it's technically, it's jurisdiction, yeah, but they all back up out here. So it's, not near as complicated as I'm guessing people are trying to make it, but.
Well, it sounds like we still need to have some more information and some further discussions.
Yeah.
And your bucket, I need to take that in real.
Like I said, I think just kind of taking it back a little bit, or something, terminology that most everybody's familiar with, that's neighborhood watch. You have a well-organized neighborhood watch.
Right, yeah, that might be the answer.
That's all it is, and if there's an issue, then we want a radio in the car, we dispatch to Florence. It's then on the record legally, and that's it, you know. And if we need some sort of backup, then it's county's jurisdiction. If they can't make it, state OSB comes in, or the tribe, or who knows. Maybe they don't get it, but it's on record.
All right, yeah.
But at least it gets on the record, and I think that's, I think it would be huge for the citizens here in Dune City.
We don't have any public hearing. New business, appointment for open positions in the planning commission. We have a couple of applicants, one for, for replacing Bonnie Allen and Richard Olson to complete the term of Michael Matthews. And their resumes are in here.
So do we need a motion to?
We need to, yes, we need a motion.
Because I've read the resumes, I, finally, can we do it?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I have to apologize, Tony. I have last week's, last month's packet and this month's packet, and I was looking at the calendar and the last month's packet.
We have no executive session scheduled? Management reports? I'm pleased to hear that our boom crusher is functioning and that he's gonna start going around the trims and stuff that needs to be trimmed. So I'm pleased with that. I am pleased with his work, and he's a good.
Yes, he's very conscientious.
Emergency center report?
Broken flag, rope, I guess, and the flags take dumbing down, so we gotta fix that, we gotta fix that. And then we have a leak in the dam.
Oh, that's where we take it.
Well, that's what they have.
Except this is at the sink, so.
You don't use the sink.
You don't leak in the sink.
All right, specialty water quality report?
I sent a letter, an email to Oregon and asked four questions. And they were, what tests will check for the health of the lakes? Because we had decided last month that we wanted to check the health of the lakes. Which of these tests do we have the equipment for? I want their help to make sure we have everything. How we can get newer equipment that don't use the chemicals, because they did say that they had some of that. And when can we get someone down to provide training? And he was on vacation last week, and I'm sure he's backlogged with emails, and I have not gotten a response yet.
Drone reports? Any reports on range? I did. Well, I, we're gonna be correct, we're gonna get a lot of overhang.
Really the same things, but if there's a truck that will do some pruning, that will help the roads around West Lake a lot. Yes, it will.
Emergency services report, Jamie?
I was unable to attend the WE-LAW meeting this week, so I really don't have.
Water status report? Do you have a water status report?
No, I do. We are nearing completion of installation of all the fish screens, yay. I received notice, a copy of a notice that was published in the State of Oregon's publication for notices regarding our application to extend the permits. And they have a new requirement now, they receive the applications, and then they publish, and they leave it open for a certain period of time to the public to comment on the, in our case, on the request for an extension. That time to comment expires August twenty-fifth, and then after that, they make a decision as to whether to extend or not, so.
Another week or so. Is this extending the timeline from October to something down the road?
Twenty thirty-five. I requested for an extension to twenty thirty-five and asked that all of our permits be moved to the same date.
To get, to put in the fish screen?
To put in the municipal water system.
Oh, okay, I see.
I think that's a good target.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Oh, I hope so. And I am sorry, but I am not gonna be here then, so.
Do you have a city administrator reporter, planning staff report?
I don't think so, no. I think, did I put anything out? I put the permit. No, I didn't. I didn't even put a permit report in there, because I don't have a permit yet. It's been busy.
Yes, I can tell. All right, for the good of the order, Susan? Hope your surgery goes well.
Thank you, thank you for letting me sit down here. I'm sure things will keep finding.
Look at you there, but here. My treat. Anything? Nope?
I have nothing.
And I've already done my thing, so looking to get a motion to adjourn, both of you?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
We're done. Thank you all.
Time for the record?
Time for the record is six forty.
Thank you.